Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. Hope all is well?
All is well. And good evening to Councilwoman Teracio.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
How's everybody doing?
Ah, I'm well, can't complain.
Y'all so excited because it's 6 o'clock?
It's 6 o'clock.
And good, good evening, everybody. Let me go ahead and call the county council Tuesday, April 20th meeting to order. Let me ask Ms. Mathis for the roll call for the attendance of council members.
Malinowski?
Here.
McBride?
Present.
Livingston?
Here.
Tracyo?
Here.
Joe Walker?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Overture Walker?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here. Have a forum.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item 2 on our agenda, which is the invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance, item 3, and that will be then by the Honorable Allison Teracio. Ms. Teracio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In this season where we have just passed the time of the yellow pollen, everything is blooming and beautiful, and it is a season of re-emergence and hope. After a long period of being in more solitude and in more darkness, we can start to emerge, not only because of the season, but because we are seeing people become vaccinated, and there is hope for a new day. So for this evening, our intention, may our intention be to take the lessons that we have learned in this time of darkness and solitude, and bring it forward into fullness and fruition and action based on our values and based on our strengths. So thank you all so much for joining me in this intention tonight. And now we'll do the pledge of allegiance. So I'm going to stand. I'm going to adjust my hammer here. All right. Okay, and if you like, you can place your hand over your heart for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Teracio. That brings us to item 4 on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. And our minutes before is the regular session of April 6th. The chair didn't take a motion.
It's removed.
It's removed and a proper second. Any discussions, changes, additions regarding our April 6 minutes? There being none, I'll ask Ms. Mathis to call the roll for the motion to adopt the agenda. I'm sorry to approve the minutes.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
I abstain as I was not present at the meeting.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings the item 5 on our agenda, which is adoption of the agenda. Mr. Brown, anything additions, deletions, or whatever as a relation to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chair. There are no additions or deletions requested from staff on the agenda.
The agenda was for adoption of the agenda.
I have a deletion.
What is that?
I have an amendment to the agenda.
And what is that amendment?
Okay, I would like to defer items 12A, the open and close hearing on Kataba, and items 14A, the third reading for Kataba, for Kataba.
Okay, we can either defer those when we get to them, or we can remove them from the agenda. So your motion is to remove those from the agenda for now.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
That was second. So the motion will be, if there's no other suggestion about getting it, the motion will be to adopt the agenda as an amendment with those two deletions.
So move.
The best occasion is to move in proper second, and that is the motion with removing those two items. Ms. Mathis, would you call the roll for the motion of adoption of the agenda as an amendment?
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey? Mackey? English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The agenda is adopted. That brings to item 6 on the agenda, report the attorney for regular session. Ms. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is one item listed on your agenda. I actually do not have an update for this item this week. If you have questions, we could still go into executive session. It is appropriate for receipt of legal advice or an update on matters under attorney-client privilege. This is the, it's related to the Coggins lawsuit and settlement with former county administrator Gerald Seals, including their view of proposed settlement agreement. That'd be appropriate under section 30-4-782 of the South Carolina Code of laws. But again, I have no specific update at this time, so that will be up to y'all. We do not have outside counsel today.
You've heard the attorney's report. Any questions? Now, I'll move to item 7, which is citizen input, and that's, and that's, item 7A is for items on the agenda, not requiring a public hearing. Do we have anyone who submitted an opportunity to speak for 7A? The public hearing is now open. Ms. Mathis, do we have anyone to request to present something for 7A?
Hold on one moment. But yes, so I do have something that would like to be read.
Yes.
Honorable Chair and members of council, my name is Viola Hindley. I reside at 104 Alabama Street, Columbia, South Carolina, and I am honored to speak on behalf of the residents of the Olympia Village and Whaley Street neighborhoods. Thank you all for your public service. The Olympia Village and Whaley Street neighborhood is directly impacted by the development proposed for 919 Kataba Street. Our concerns include the lack of public parking available for residents' guests, closing at through streets, pedestrian/bike safety due to increased traffic in neighborhoods, and the management of stormwater within the Rocky Branch watershed. The developers met with the Mill District Alliance that represents the three Mill District neighborhoods during the fall of 2020. After meeting with the City of Columbia in December 2020, Adam Beck, Vice President of Acquisitions and Development for Dinerstein Companies assured us that, quote, "We would be willing to work with the association on improving the wetlands in the meeting, but we are willing to work to add any improvements in the city, any improvements the city will let us do in that area," end quote. The Rocky Branch watershed is one of the counties most impacted by overdevelopment, resulting in increases in stormwater and flash flooding. As a result, we respectively asked that council, excuse me, county council hold Dinerstein Companies responsible for the necessary stormwater mitigation and the development of wetland tributary as conditions to receive the county 10-year tax abatement. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, if I recall, I think that is the item that Ms. McBride recommended that we took off the agenda proceeding. Anyone else for that particular citizen input? If not, that public hearing 7A is now closed. We also have an item 8, which is a citizen's input item also, which must pertain to a rich and count of matter not on the agenda. Did anyone sign up to provide something reference, item 8A?
No, sir.
That public hearing is now closed. That brings to item 9 on your agenda, and that is to report the county administrator. Mr. Brown, you're recognized.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of council, in your packet beginning on page 22, you have information that I provided for the council's awareness. You see under item 1 on that report, that Richland County, the last reporting, we continue to see declining numbers overall related to our percent positive in Richland County, and we continue to have a lower incident rate. So I did want to point that out as we continue to look at and monitor 19 within Richland County. Also, in your packet, I provided you some of general information referring to our emergency rental assistance program, which kicked off on April the 5th. And I thought it would be important to share this with you so you could see how the program is going and have some general understanding of the numbers that are being reported out by Tetra Tech, who is assisting. One of the first things I want to do, Mr. Chair, just briefly, is I have a quick update on a customer service scenario that we received where one of the citizens reached out and talked about their experience in participating in the emergency rental assistance program. And they said, "I wanted you to know my experience with Ms. Tervani Strong. She's a young lady who apparently works with one of the call centers that is being handled by the consultant running this program. I've been in dire need of assistance with my bills. Ms. Strong has been absolutely amazing. This is my first time ever utilizing this program. She walked me through each and every step and even called me to assure that she would do her best to make sure I was taken care of. Her follow-up phone calls and emails has certainly put me at ease, put me in the loop every step of the way. Ms. Strong is absolutely amazing. Her customer service goes a long way, and that attribute goes a long way in a business. I am so grateful for this assistance and to be working with someone who is understanding and pleasant to speak to. Kindness regards, Ms. Sharon Young." And I would imagine that we have other citizens that are working with the Richland County Library, that are working with the government community services department, who are receiving this type of assistance and this type of help with the process. But I thought it was good to just recognize individuals who were taking the time to write to the council and through their administration and share information. With that being said, on page 22 of the packet, you saw in there some money that has already been approved as a part of this program. So the program started on April 5th, and already funding has been approved to go out to these rental folks who need this assistance, whether for rental arrears, future rent, or utility arrears. And you have that information right there on page 22. And that information has been updated since this particular report went out. As you will see, this report went out in your packet, so it had to be sent out on the 15th, but we have approved additional payments since then. Also, in your packet, you see a breakdown of demographics that talk about the number of folks who have applied and been approved as of the date of this report. It shows you the breakdown by zip code, the breakdown by race, the breakdown by age, as well as by ethnicity and by gender. So you get a good idea of where the folks are applying, what zip codes they're in, and as well as what groups of individuals and what age of individuals. So hopefully this reporting gives you some general idea of the individuals who are being impacted by this program and that are being reached by these services. So the program, again, just started. We plan to approve more folks as they apply and are eligible. But this was an initial report that I wanted to share with you to get some ideas from you about that the reporting helped you better understand who's applying, there is additional information that would be helpful for you to see. And we have Mr. King on the line with us as well, in case there are questions about the report that I'm unable to answer. With that, Mr. Chair, that will conclude my report. I'm certainly willing to take any questions that the council may have about the information that we shared.
Ms. Tracy, I know you'll hammer it up for a while. Did you have a question about this item? Was that before this one?
Well, I actually wanted to raise my hand in advance because I did have a question for Mr. Brown. Actually, and I appreciate the COVID-19 update, what I wanted to ask about was employee, so I believe there was a memo about employees being able to use some time off to be vaccinated, and wondered if, I know it's common for people to have some side effects from vaccines, and if we were allowing our employees who are getting vaccinations to have some time off in anticipation of those side effects?
Yes, ma'am.
If that's a, hopefully, that question.
The short answer is yes. Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic. Yeah, I just had my second dose, and I realized that we probably needed to make sure that we gave some people some space and time to take care of themselves when they got their vaccinations.
Yes, ma'am. I sent out an administrative memorandum to that effect.
Thank you so much. Glad we're taking care of folks.
That's it, Ms. Tracy?
That's it for me.
Thank you. I have Ms. Newton and Ms. McBride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, two questions about the chart that's on page 22. The way that I am reading this chart, for example, is that we have had applications for $78,947 for rental arrears, for landlord utilities, et cetera, that this chart represents the total value of the applications we have received to date. Is that correct?
Right, so the amount that you're looking at is the amount of funding that has been approved for landlord or utility payments under rental arrears. So if that's what you're looking at, that's gone directly to those organizations, to the landlord or to the utility companies.
Thank you. Okay, so then, looking at this again, I'm sorry, I was, these are all, this is a breakdown of the funds that have already been approved, as opposed to a quantification of funds that have been applied for.
Correct.
And then?
Payments. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I'm sure that our staff is doing a great job. Thank you for all of the measures that you've put in. My question would be, to the extent that we had expectations about how we would be able to approve funding, does this track with what we were expecting? Is it ahead of what we were expecting? Is it perhaps a little bit slower than what we're expecting, given that we are just now kicking this program off for the first time?
Yeah, so I'll have Mike King weigh in with detail, but I would just say to you, based on our review of other programs, we are, I'm not going to say we're warp speed ahead, but we are certainly learned from their challenges, and we benefited from that. So I would say we're definitely ahead of schedule in that the first two weeks, we've already approved payments to go out to folks who are in need. So, but Mr. King, could you weigh in some detail for the council, please?
Yes, sir. It'd be my pleasure. Yes, just to kind of back up what Administrator Brown's saying is, we are very pleased with the progress that we're making so far, especially comparative to other jurisdictions around the countries. This is a very, very aggressive program. I think, looking at the startup, probably the startup was as smooth as we could have expected. Especially as Mr. Administrator Brown said, we really took to heart the lessons learned and the information sharing from all the other agencies provided to us by the U.S. Treasury Department around the country. And talking about our local assistance, as you know, the call center is handling the actual application process. And, but the Richland Library, I spoke with the Richland Library today, and also our Department of Government and Community Services. And the Richland Library so far has actually handled 46 in-person appointments assisting our residents. They've had over 677 resident contacts. Our Department of Government Community Services has had actually 98 in-person appointments assistance. And although they talked to Director Kiefer, although they don't have the actual matrix data for the phone calls, she described that the phone calls being received assist residents in the hundreds. And our actual call center itself has had processed over 4,000 calls. So we're being very aggressive. It's a very dynamic program. We're very pleased with what we've done in the first two weeks. However, we're not going to rest on our laurels. We're going to keep pushing the program through. However, at the same time, we want to make sure we take the time to ensure that we're doing proper eligibility review, proper quality assurance. And again, it does take some time. When the applicant is submitted, many, many times, it is missing critical requisite information. And our eligibility specialists are working one-on-one with the applicant to make sure they get that information in so they can be approved. Right now, we have 669 applications that have been completed and submitted by the applicant. However, we are working one-on-one with those applicants to get the information we need so we can get it approved.
Thank you, and thank you for those details. And I guess my last question would be, well, first, to say thank you for the amount of data that you have provided here. It's extremely helpful to look at. I've noticed that you've tracked applications by zip code. Will you also be tracking dispersments that way as well?
Yes, we can do that. We can certainly do that down the road once we start getting a good sample base for the dispersment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I have Ms. McBride, and then Ms. Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown and Mr. King, I really want to thank you for the work that you've done on this initiative and particularly answering some of our concerns. And I'm very pleased with the data collection process that we've talked about numerous times, and it's easy to follow, and also the assistance that is being given to our residents. And at some time in the future, I know that you will be able to sort of gauge where we are in terms of meeting the deadline for September. And at that time, I look forward to hearing more information on that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, did you call me?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Sorry, I missed that. Yes, I just wanted to echo, you know, we've heard a lot from people who have said they have been working closely through the application process. And I just wanted to say that I have also heard that from applicants, that there is definitely a diligent process, that people are working with people on these applications. So I'm very appreciative of that, that it's, that the applications don't just go into a void and kind of sit there, but people are actually working with the applicants along the way. So thank you so very much.
Then I have Ms. Baron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take a pause to thank Mr. Brown and Mr. King and the staff for their diligence in getting this program out to the community and to also make sure that it just didn't get out in the community, but people were fully aware of what's going on and then the service that they're receiving, I think speaks volume, as the note said that you read, Mr. Brown. So I just wanted to really applaud you and your team for the efforts that you put forward. And I look forward to us hopefully meeting that, going all the way up, getting as much funds out as possible. And I don't know if there is a way, I know I see it a lot on our social media thread, but are we still doing the advertisement to out in the community as well?
Yes, ma'am. This is not, this is not going to stop. We have, you know, a little over $12 million that we want to get out in the hands of those individuals who need it, whether it's the landlord, whether it's the tenant, whether it's the utility company. So we will continue to push that information out. And really, the next step, and Ms. Baron, you and I will be talking about this a little bit later on this week, but the next step is really to get with the community areas, and that's going to be the next step, is to go out to some spaces here. So, but right now, we're, in this first kickoff, as you've heard, we've got 4,000 applications right now that are currently in some shape of the process. But we want more, and we want all that $12 million to get spent for people who need it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Brown, for your report?
No, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is to report to the county council. Ms. Mathis?
So I just wanted to remind everyone of some upcoming meetings. So there is a Transportation Penny Advisory Committee, and that meeting will be on April 26 at 5:30. It is a Zoom meeting. We have several meetings on the 27th I'd like to remind people about. So it's the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee on April 27th. It meets at 4:00 PM. That is also Zoom. There is a Development and Services Committee on April 27th as well. That meeting is at 5:00. It's also a Zoom meeting. And there is an Administration and Finance Committee meeting on April 27th that will meet at 6:00 PM. That is also a Zoom meeting. We have a budget work session on April 29th, and that is at 4:00 PM, which is also a Zoom meeting. And that concludes my report.
Next, bring us to the report of the chair. The chair does not have a report to see me. Next, let's have item 12. It's open and close public hearings. We have one public hearing, and that is the item that was removed at the beginning of the agenda. So 12A has been removed from the agenda. Brings item 13, approval of consent items, and that is 13A.
Mr. Chair?
Through D.
I move to approve items 13A through 13D.
Most of those approved for the consent items, A through D, is a proper second discussion. There being no discussion, Ms. Mathis can call the roll for the motion for consent items A, B, C, and D.
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item 14A, which was removed from the agenda. Item 15, reported Economic Development Committee, and the Honorable Ivan McBride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On item 15A, the report from the Economic Development Committee is approving the lease and sell of certain real property located in and owned by Richland County, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement with Magnus Development Partners LLC and other matters related thereto. This is a first reading item on a lease agreement between the county and Magnus Development Partners to develop a 210,000-square-foot shell building that is located in the county-owned industrial site located at North Point Industrial Park. that is located in the county-owned industrial site located at North Point Industrial Park, which is near Blackwood. This building will make the county more attractive to potential investors with a tight line, timeline. Um, this is a first read and item, and this item, staff has been working on this issue since December twenty-seventeen. Um, and again, this is a first read and items in there. So we have two other opportunities to review it again. Thank you.
Thank you. You heard the committee's recommendation for approval of item fifteen A, um, discussion. Um, Mr. Racio, you recognize?
I just wanted to make sure that I heard the chair right. Uh, did, did Ms. McBride say December twenty-seventeen?
December twenty-seventeen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Bill Malinowski.
Now, now he recognized.
Thank you, sir. I spoke with the Economic Development Director Ruble earlier today. And there are some things that I've asked him to please provide or at least clarify. Because while it mentions exhibits A, B, C, and D in our information, there are no such exhibits in there. All the rights such as termination, construction, inspection seem to favor the company to the potential detriment of Richland County. And something such as the effective date is not defined also. So Mr. Ruble's supposed to be getting those answers, but until I get complete information, that's why I will vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Malinowski, I'm also express my appreciation for you, um, getting the heads up and talking with, with Mr. Ruble ahead of time on live. I really appreciate it.
And Mr. Chair, we discussed those items and Mr. Ruble is working on them now. And given that this is the first read, then we will have those items back by the second read. Thank you.
Very much. Any further discussion? If not, um, Ms. Mathis, can you cover all for the motion regarding the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee for approval for item fifteen A? Ms. Mathis can cover all?
I believe she's on mute. So there we go.
Malinowski?
No.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
I'm going to abstain because of a financial relationship with one of the principals of the business in question, but no direct relationship to this particular transaction.
Barron? Barron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings the item sixteen, which is other items. Sixteen A is the detainee telephone service. Um, Mr. Brown, who's going to?
Is that? Yes, sir. We have the Avalon Ness Glen Detention Center Director, Mr. Ronaldo Myers, who's going to continue to address this matter for the council. Mr. Myers, are you on, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm, Mr. Chair, may I be recognized?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Mr. Brown. I'm, Ms. Myers.
Uh, the information I attached, I think is addendum two. I think, uh, those were some of the questions, or the questions that Mr. Councilman Malinowski had. Um, just see if anyone has any questions of me.
If the questions reference them, item sixteen A.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I do.
Recognize.
Thank you, sir. Um, while we've been given information here from the director, there's still quite a bit of information that is lacking. Uh, how, how long has this uh, management system, jail management system been in place, sir?
Current one we have?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the current one we have has been in place since nine, excuse me, since two thousand, I believe, two thousand and one.
Okay, and if, wh- why did the Richland County Information Technology Group get involved?
This system came from uh, Lexington Fayette. It was a homegrown system written by a programmer that worked for them at the time. It was, I would say, inexpensive. Um, we needed an uh, a jail management system at the time, and the director during that time chose this system because it was inexpensive. Uh, and they had the codes to it and the IT could um, develop a system for us. That's what we originally thought.
Okay, but it hasn't worked out that way, has it?
No, sir. And also I'd like to remind you, when we had a consultant come in to review jail operations, that was one of the things he commented on, saying we needed a system, um, because we were very heavily dependent on paper. And I think that was two thousand and twelve.
And Director Myers, I, I wholeheartedly support you getting a system that works to cut down on your work and make sure that things are accurate down there. But what, what I'd like to know is, and then this probably isn't your answer to give, but if information technology from Richland County is supposed to be providing technical support for the current system, yet we're being told in your answers here that requested upgrades have not been given pri- priority and have been pending for several years, I'm wondering why that's the case. And maybe Administrator Brown can give us an answer like that. Sounds to me like there's a job they're supposed to do and they're not doing it.
Well, to, to be fair to IT, not only do they have several other departments, but also when you start talking about jail management system, it gets very sophisticated to where once, one program has to speak to another program. And I personally don't think that they have the, quite all the expertise they need. Jail operations have um, grown by leaps and bounds since two thousand. And when, you know, we're relying on things that we don't have paper where we can get things by automation now, and I just don't think IT has the, enough programmers to keep the program going the way it should be going.
Okay, and.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Brown.
Yes, Ms. Malinowski, and, and I know you addressed me in that question. I'm going to try to step lightly on this uh, response. Um, but uh, several of the folks who are uh, here are no longer uh, able to speak to this. But my understanding is that there has been requests, uh, maybe not specific to the jail management system, but uh, technology request for many years that have uh, not been approved. So uh, that could be part of the issue is that, that it just was not an, an approved rec- uh, recommendation that they submitted did not get approved. So that, that has uh, hurt, hit my ear several times related to technology request uh, since I've been here, and that's why I'm focusing on technology in the, in the budget.
Okay, thank you, Administrator Brown. My biggest problem still with this is that the reply to the question I asked, the potential cost of the proposed jail management system to include maintenance. The reply was, the cost of the proposed system cannot be determined until the system is reviewed. And that if we don't know how much the system costs, I don't know how any offerer can agree to provide us funding for that particular system. How, how will that work?
In the email back to the um, uh, Mr. Dennison sent an email back to me, to me. He gave us, gave me a bottom line, speaking, saying at, at, at least uh, you will get at least three hundred thousand a year based off the ten percent revenue. We're not sure how much revenue it's going to bring in. However, they're not going to allow me to go over a certain amount, um, more than what they estimated. We, we have to, you know, of course you have to go through negotiations when you start talking about bringing software, see how, exactly how much it's going to cost. That's the reason why I said I don't know the um, cost. But the, a- as I said earlier, the vendor, um, GTO sales representative also said, you know, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, I think that's the, that's the amount he has on there. It says, we know that you're going to get at least that much a year.
Okay, that's fine, but what happens if we find out the system costs five hundred thousand to run per year? Where's the rest of the money come from?
No, the, the system, it's, I, we're going to have to sit down along with IT, you know, I'm going to sit down with IT and finding system that actually we can afford. It won't be something that we cannot afford.
Okay, so uh, are you going to be then uh, having the Legal Department of Richland County draw up some type of a memorandum of understanding regarding the contract that will be entered into?
Yes, sir. That's, I think that's normal. I'm not sure. I have to, that um, procurement has to get involved in it, but I believe that's a normal process.
So right now, would you say that what you're asking for is to enter into negotiations and get the rest of the info?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, since this is another item that was before us before, I'll make a motion that we allow Director Ronaldo Myers to enter into negotiations with the offerer. And prior to committing that Legal Department is involved to make sure that everything is proper.
You, you heard the motion that's second?
Second?
It's moving properly second. I have Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Myers, just a quick question. You, you mentioned that, you know, you would stay within the, the budget and not get a system that we couldn't afford. Do you have an idea that is that amount of money enough to meet the needs that you have? And I, I'm just wondering, are we going to be in a situation where you're, you're settling for a system that you really need more? And in two or three years from now, you know, you're going to be needing more than what you have?
Yes, ma'am. Based off of the, the, the way the payment is, we get at least three hundred thousand dollars a year. And we can stretch the payments over the life of the contract, which is five years. But I doubt if we're going to spend that much on the, on, on the JMS, jail management system.
Ms. Mackey?
Yes, thank you.
I have um, Ms. Newton and Ms. Tracio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Myers, as a follow-up, the way that I'm understanding what's going to happen is that once you enter into negotiations, at that time, you will have a number that you can work with or at least a range based on certain parameters. Is that correct? You don't know it now because you haven't done the negotiation, but you will.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Tracio.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think, I think I have my, my questions answered. I am, so thank you and uh, thank you for bringing this information before us, uh, Mr. Myers.
Any further discussion? It's been moved in proper second, um, based on Ms. Malinowski, a motion to move forward on this item. Uh, any further discussion? If not, Ms. Mathis, can you call a row for the motion for approval for item sixteen A?
Yes. Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item sixteen B, which is also under other items. And that is emergency funding for fiscal year twenty-one for the Coroner's Office, uh, Office. Mr. Brown, you recognize?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'm going to give the, the council just a, a quick synopsis. I do have the uh, coroner on attending the meeting as well. But what you have before you uh, is a staff's recommendation to be proactive and put in place a contingency plan that allows the coroner's office to continue to operate uh, so that there is no hiccups between uh, payments for vendors. Uh, and so what we have is, we have the coroner who has identified uh, that going forward, uh, she's going to have a shortfall based on the expenditures that has been routinely spent. Uh, and looking at those services that are routinely being used and the number of times that she's having to use those services this fiscal year. Uh, the staff and I, when met with the coroner, uh, looked at the information that she provided. We did our own analysis, uh, and while we were slightly different in our numbers, we were still both around the three hundred thousand dollar range. What we're doing right now, working with the Budget Office, uh, we are looking at opportunities to, within the county's current approved budget, uh, to basically, you know, fill the gap. Uh, but in the event that we're unable to fully fill that gap, uh, and that, and it's kind of borne out, we want to make sure we have in place a contingency effort that will allow the county's operations from the coroner's office to continue. So what we're simply asking the council to consider, uh, I don't need anything specifically approved tonight, uh, but so that we can be ahead of the game in considering this uh, potential budget amendment, is I need you to be aware that the information that you have in your packet represents actual expenditures that the coroner's office routinely, routinely spends. And that we do have a mechanism in place today to address some current issues. Uh, but if we run out of those additional resources, it will require council action. So I want the council to be aware of that, have an opportunity to address questions to myself or the coroner. So that if we came back to you, you could just make a decision with all the information already being borne out. Uh, with that being said, Mr. Uh, Chair, I would certainly entertain if it uh, be your desire, the, the coroner, but I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
And you said you, you don't necessarily need any accident this time, is that correct?
That's correct. We have worked with the Budget Office. Uh, we believe that we, again, can fill in the gap right now. Uh, but as you all are aware, everything is, is kind of fluid with the, um, with the pandemic. But right now, we believe we have funding available, but we want to put a contingency in place so that we don't wait to the last minute. And if we don't have enough funding later on, that we have to come back and start the process from scratch. And now we're untimely, not able to prompt pay invoices, and then unable to receive services.
I have um, uh, so, Joe Walker, and then Ms. Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, and Mr. Brown, I'm not sure if this is maybe a question for you or a question for uh, our coroner. Uh, so whomever can answer the question, uh, feel free to uh, respond. But I'm just wondering, how did we find ourselves in this position? Uh, you know, I heard about uh, the story today for the first time with the state newspaper. And I thought to myself, you know, here's a, you know, another black eye for the county. Uh, so I was, you know, uh, just, you know, disturbed by what I read. Now, of course, you know, that's what's reported in the media, uh, but what I came across was, I think, the statement that we're not able to afford, the coroner's office can afford autopsies or body storage. So again, I mean, to me, that's one of the core functions of the coroner's office. So how do we find ourselves in a position where we have this funding shortfall? And I guess what assurances uh, can you give going forward? Or what can we do going forward to ensure that this does not happen again?
Yeah, certainly, sir. I, I will start off and I can certainly let the coroner weigh in. But uh, so early on, and, and you all may not recall right offhand, but uh, I mentioned actually during the council retreat, the, that the coroner was looking at and looking at the budget and projecting out some potential increases uh, that she may have to have addressed. At that time, we told the coroner, it's like we do with many other departments, work within your budget. We will make sure that you have funding to do the job that you are required to do. Uh, and so the coroner has done that, and at this point, uh, we are projecting out that she, she's going to need some additional help. So that's really how we got to this point, based on the increased cost. She was working within her budget. Now we're at the point where she recognizes she's going to need some additional help that was uh, beyond the, the scope of her budget. And so now we're coming to the council, saying, let's get ahead of this to make sure that this continuity exists. Uh, but certainly, Mr. Walker, I can let the coroner speak to that, but uh, that's, that's kind of where this uh, derives from.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. I certainly love to hear from my coroner as well, if she wishes to address the council.
You, you recognize, you wish it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So when I came into office on January fifth, uh, even before coming into office, uh, Mr. Brown and his staff graciously allowed me to come in to discuss the budget concerns that we had just to, just based on what we could see from an outside perspective. Once we got into office and really crunched the numbers, we realized that there was a very large deficit noticed. And based on the projections that we had, um, we figured that we would come up short around March, which is exactly what has happened. Um, we did not know exactly how we would come up short, but we figured that um, in terms of the hiring of new staff, uh, certainly the autopsies and the post-mortem toxicology that has to take place along with body transport services, that we were going to have some huge deficits. Um, and just as I predicted, based on the numbers and based on the trends, we're already up thirty percent in terms Um, and just as I predicted, based on the numbers and based on the trends, we're already up thirty percent in terms of the number of deaths that have been reported here in Richland County. Last year around this time, there were one thousand and I believe, and you have this information in front of you. Um, but there was a uh, significant increase by almost three hundred deaths uh, between last year um, um, and this year. And so not only do we have an increase, a thirty percent increase in the number of deaths um, all overall, a third, about a third of those are COVID related. So um, for those persons that um, have passed on, um, we can't just say to them, we won't do an autopsy. Families have questions. The youngest person that we've had that died from COVID nineteen was twenty years old. And so you can imagine a twenty year old just dropping dead and not having any significant health history, that the amount of testing that would be done would be pretty significant. And so for uh, our cases, we just had to have an increased uh, number of resources that are utilized. So body transport is up thirty percent. Autopsies are up thirty percent. Um, toxicology testing and extra testing is up thirty percent. So uh, whether or not the budget was going to last, um, you know, for this year, um, we knew that it was not going to, and we knew that we were going to need an increase. We just weren't sure quite how long we were going to make it into the fiscal year, but certainly by March, we predicted that we would be coming to you on binded me uh, asking for money. Uh, I just would also like to point out that um, we did ask for about $65,000 early on due to the body storage situation, and I and I don't want to be graphic um, in the description of this. Um, but I noticed that need on January fifth, and once we got the proposals together, uh, we certainly sent that over to Mr. Brown so that we could properly and um, in a dignified way store the remains of the citizens of our county.
And uh, and uh, Madam Coroner, the sixty-five thousand that you referenced with respect to the uh, body storage, is that also included or is that subsumed by this three hundred thousand um, uh, dollar request?
Already approved that, sir.
It was already approved, sir.
Mr. Brown, I'm sorry. You said it's not.
You already, the council already took up that matter and approved it, Mr. Walker.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And Mr. Walker, if I may, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I wanted to make sure that I addressed the question, Mr. Walker, that you had of, um, will we find ourselves in this predicament again? Um, unfortunately, the the uh, rate of deaths has gone up, and so unless there is a decrease in that number, um, we will, we will need extra funds, and we tried to account for that in the proposed budget that we had for the fiscal year, for the new fiscal year that will begin on July one. And so we've tried to take into account and pad it a little bit so that we do not have to um, come to you again and ask for more money, but unfortunately, um, we can't time when people die, and so that increase has caused a significant um, deficit in the budget, and we are trying to work within uh, those means by uh, bringing on another transport service that offers the service at a much lower rate than the uh, current service. Um, and just trying to find every way that we can to decrease costs for the county.
Thank you, Madam Coroner.
Thank you, sir.
I have this is Newton, Ms. Baron, and then Ms. McBride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Coroner. You started to address what was going to be my question, which is if you had accounted for this and you're planning for next fiscal year's budget, broadly speaking, have you planned for a net increase of thirty percent in next fiscal year's budget, or have you increased it beyond that thirty percent for next year's planning?
What we decided to do was we we did account for that thirty percent. We asked um, for a total, I believe, of about nine hundred thousand dollars in addition to um, to the current budget that we have. Um, the recommendation uh, that we received did not approve that full amount, but we are strongly and very graciously asking for council to reconsider um, that budget that they um, have recommended to us because we have to take into account um, the extra deaths that are occurring, uh, whether they, and it's just an increase in natural deaths. There have been eleven hundred uh, and thirty natural deaths that have occurred in our county. And so that number, you have to think is up by three hundred almost. So you know, again, we cannot time when people will will pass, but um, certainly it seems like we're on an uptick unfortunately, and so we tried to account for that by asking for an additional nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, but it has not been recommended uh, to us, but we're hoping that they may reconsider.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Baron and then Ms. McBride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and 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 this could be for uh, either Mr. Brown or our coroner. Um, and and you somewhat alluded to it already, but i- is it a is it a safe assumption to say that we're in this position, this is a COVID-related um, problem that we're experiencing, or would we not, we would have come to this place in at any rate?
We would have come to this place anyway, um, Ms. Baron, and and just to give you some numbers that may not be included in your packet there. Um, is since January first, uh, we've had twenty-three accidents, fifteen homicides, one thousand and one hundred and thirty natural deaths, seven suicides, five fetal deaths, but COVID nineteen, um, we were just under two hundred at one hundred and ninety-nine. So again, the percentage of COVID-related deaths is is much smaller. It's our natural deaths that are really uh, taking a toll on on the on the budget. And you know, again, we just cannot uh, tell people when to die. It's not a, it's not a thing where we say, could you just wait until the next fiscal year? It doesn't quite work that way. So uh, we've had an increase. Um, we have our staff working around the clock, uh, going to these calls. So um, COVID or not, this was an increase and and it's an increase by thirty percent.
Councilman Baron, if I can just follow up on that, I I don't want to give you all too many numbers and throw you off, but looking at the expenditure from the coroner's office, so twenty eighteen, you were at two point seven eight million. Twenty nineteen, two point eight seven million. Twenty twenty, three point four two million. So I I think that there is some correlation uh, and to uh, the coroner's point, I I believe her budget request was for three point nine million, which uh, we did not recommend based on the spin from last year and where we're trending this year, where we're looking for her to potentially um, be about three point five million. And so we did recommend uh, that uh, so that we could cover that, but we did not recommend the three point nine million. Which would have been uh, you know, almost over one point six million more in a two-year, two-year span and 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 really we just uh, were not able to budget that um, with all the other county needs that you have. So that's why we did the three point five, which is reflective of what we expect to happen this year, and it was a little bit over what they hit last year.
Well, uh, if, Mr. Chair, if I may, just have a follow-up question?
Yes.
Uh, so I I and I'm and I'm trying to draw some connection or correlation um, to to COVID nineteen as we may, and and this is a big may with a question mark, um, be able to utilize other funds that are coming down from from the federal government. Yeah, I I just want to, I'm I'm sure that's a thought somewhere, but um, you know, that may be a way for us to address some of those coded COVID-related deaths with the thoughts that, you know, we we can use other funding for the natural causes. And and, you know, I know it's hard to separate between the two, but if we could look at perhaps some creative thinking of where we can get the the funds from to support the needs of the coroner's office.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have McBride, Hugh, and Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Ms. Baron, um, addressed some of my questions, and um, Madam Coroner, um, I too was wondering about the relationship with uh, COVID nineteen. Um, and I noticed that you said the natural deaths are are also increasing. Um, but with those natural deaths, were there any tested for COVID nineteen with those deaths?
So for anyone that, and and that's a great question, so thank you so much for asking that. Um, we have not been asked to do this, but we have been um, collecting our own set of raw data, uh, Mrs. McBride, on the number of COVID uh, related deaths. Um, if they did not test positive for COVID within the last three months, we're still keeping track of them to see if maybe the long-term effects of COVID may have um, caused any heart or respiratory issues that they did not have prior to being diagnosed with COVID in that three-month time period before. So we are keeping track of those numbers. We're also keeping track of the numbers of of people and families that have told us that their loved one received a vaccination um, and maybe uh, had um, had a reaction or a death related to that. Um, again, we're not saying that that is uh, a direct correlation, but we are collecting that data proactively so that in case DHEC or FEMA or the federal government does ask for that at some point, we're ahead of the curve and don't have to try to go back and retroquery uh, those charts. So for the deaths that are related to COVID, um, if they had symptoms of COVID, if their family member said that they reported not feeling well, we are performing COVID nineteen tests um, on those uh, persons. If they uh, said that they had trouble breathing or shortness of breath or fever um, or general malaise, we are performing COVID nineteen tests on those uh, decedents postmortem, um, which is an increased cost, unfortunately, but we're trying to make families aware so that um, so that we can try to protect our community. Um, if they're coming from certain areas, and I notice that there are, like, if they're from a Hopkins area and we notice that there are a number of COVID deaths coming from the area, um, we're protecting our staff here, making sure that folks are vaccinated, but we're also um, saying to people in those communities via social media, please make sure that you're wearing your mask, washing your hands, be safe. But uh, we are performing postmortem COVID tests on some of our natural deaths because um, we have found that some of those that were considered natural actually did end up being positive for COVID, and they had not been tested prior to their death.
Okay, thank you, because um, I was thinking also that should we get additional resources for COVID nineteen, that some of those funds could be used to help address some of your areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
You and then Ms. Mackey. Ms. Hugh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Madam Coroner, I want to commend you on doing an outstanding job of being proactive and getting ahead of this thing. I can definitely attest to the fact that the deaths are on the rise. Uh, my spouse works in the capacity of a hospice, and it's and it's been a, it's it's been a task here in the last couple of months. Um, so I just want to commend you on 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 getting ahead of this thing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I recognize, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you're ma, you recognize it, ma.
Thank you. Um, and I don't know if this question is for Administrator Brown or for the coroner, but um, just want to make sure I was understanding the report. Currently, the coroner's office is not past due on any of our invoices or services. This is just a proactive measure. Is that correct?
So the coroner, well, I'm I'm go ahead, Ms. Ms. Whiteford, then I'll follow up.
Okay, so we will not be able to pay our, some of our bills for March. Um, and we certainly won't be able to pay our bills for April. So um, to give you just an example, the purchase order for uh, professional pathology services that performs the autopsy services for the county, there's only nineteen thousand dollars left on the PO for them, and their average bill per month is eighty thousand dollars. And so we obviously do not have enough to be able to to pay them. Um, transport services, I believe, is uh, at zero at this point. Um, after this next invoice, I do not believe we have the money for March to to pay them. Uh, the encumbered areas and then what's on left on the PO um, can be a little bit confusing as you're looking at it, but I assure you that with Mr. Brown and his team, we sat down, they crunched the numbers, um, and the only thing that they did not account for is that we owe a local funeral home two thousand dollars for providing cremation services at a hugely discounted rate for us, and we just buried twenty-two persons. So um, we're we're out of money. And um, there's no other way to say it.
Okay, so now I'll follow up to uh, what the Ms. Coroner, uh, Rutherford just communicated. So within her budget, uh, that was approved, uh, she does not have funds to carry her through the remainder of the year. So that's why we're going to step in uh, and utilize funds as I as I mentioned that are not located within her approved budget, but are located within the county's overall approved budget. So as we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year, from time to time, this is something that happens to their budget sweeps where you have departments who are unable, for whatever number of reasons, who have outstanding invoices, and you have departments who have uh, not spent it uh, as much as they anticipated. So you you use those funds and you make those adjustments. So right now, what we anticipate on doing is doing just that for the coroner's budget. If in fact, we um, go through this process and we expend all of those funds as well, which right now, we're we're not projected to do that based on our projections, then it will require additional council action. So my thought is, instead of getting to that point to where we at our, we are not able to to actually move forward without some council action, come to you in advance, make you aware of the situation, have you get, you have time to think about it, have questions, give feedback, and in the meantime, we can still utilize what we have now to address the coroner's uh, items uh, until we are not, we don't longer have that flexibility. Right now, we do, but again, this is being proactive so that we don't get to a point to where there's a stoppage, where there is a a break in operational services that the coroner cannot perform her sworn duty. Did that answer your question, Ms.?
It does. Thank you. And I I just a follow-up question. Um, in your discussions um, about this, was there any um, evaluation of current expenses that could have been reduced to alleviate some of the money that we're having to pull uh, from another place? And then between now and the end of the fiscal year, are we um, maybe looking at stopping some expenses that we don't need? For instance, are you all still planning on hiring in the coroner's office, or are we going to pause on that and not incur additional, I guess, expenses if we know we just don't have the money and wait until our next fiscal year?
So uh, thank you so much for that question. Um, I'd love that you asked that because I'm the cheapest person you have ever met. And um, so we have done lots of things in this office to uh, decrease the spending. So, for example, even my office furniture, I didn't have office furniture when I came in. I thrifted every single piece of furniture that is in this office um, from local thrift stores um, in our community. Um, we 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 took the opportunity for some of the things that we could have purchased, and we just said we will wait for next year. So every single expense that we have made at this point has been a necessary expense. Um, you know, there were some things that we had to pay for, some damages that were done to the offices offices prior to us coming that we had to pay for. So there were some um, uh, building improvement things that we had to do because there were holes in the walls and and some different things. So um, some of the cars were um, in less than stellar condition, and so we had to uh, fix those so that we could have our deputy coroners to be able to go out to scene. So um, for every expenditure that you see there, it was necessary. Um, but not only was it necessary, it was scrutinized, and it's not an ongoing expenditure for the office. We have halted um, in hiring. Um, we don't, we took our, um, before I came into office, uh, part-time staff um, could work full-time hours and receive overtime, and and it really affected the budget, and so we uh, stopped that. Um, from day one, um, our part-time staff was taken down to about twenty hours a week. Um, so we have done, we've made great strides in reducing uh, the amount of money that is spent here in this office. Uh, but we can't perform the necessary uh, duties of the office at this point. So none of these things that we're asking for are um, are like frivolous, because of frivolous spending. It is only because we don't have what we need to do the actual functions of the office.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Madam, was that you?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Uh, the uh, the question I, it's it's actually just to comment probably for Administrator Brown, this uh, line item chart that we were given in the agenda, uh, it to me is confusing or less than complete because you've got transferred and there are numbers there, but I don't know where it's transferred from. Is it from somewhere else within this particular department's budget? Was it from another department? Where did it come from? I have no idea. Then when you go down, I mean, some are ins and some are outs. Uh, you've got revised amounts. You've got available. I mean, when it says available, you're close to three hundred fifty thousand available. I don't know if that's something that will or won't be used. So I would just like to see a little bit more detailed explanation next time we're provided some type of uh, spending chart. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Malinowski, and uh, the information that you have in terms of that chart was one of the items that we went and reviewed with the coroner's office. This was their initial submission to us. Uh, and so I, I know that the coroner is listening, so, uh, and has heard your comments concerning that.
And Mr. Malinowski, if I may, uh, the money was transferred from line items in our budget. Um, this was our good faith effort to try to move monies around, um, to try to make things work. Uh, we just got to a point where, where we weren't going to have enough, and so we had to contact, um, council, uh, to be heard on this matter. But if there is another format that you would like the budget and expenditures to be listed in, I would certainly be open to receiving that template from you, um, so that it is better understood by members of council. Thank you so much for the suggestion, sir.
Thank you, Coroner.
My pleasure.
Any, any further discussion? If not, um, Mr. Brown, I would certainly thank you for bringing that, um, to our attention. Um, Madam Coroner, thank you very much, um, for your input and the job you do for Richland County.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to item seventeen, which is our executive session items. Uh, as you heard, our, um, active county attorney did not have anything other than brief up that she gave you. Um, anything else in the session? I don't have. The next item on our agenda is motion period. Ms. Mathis, I didn't have anything reference to motion period unless it was, um, anything that was attached. Was there anything presented for the motion period?
No, sir.
That's item eighteen. That brings us to item nineteen.
Move to adjourn.
It's motion for adjournment. It's proper second. Wait a minute, is it time for that yet? Okay.
No discussion needed.
It's moving proper second for, uh, the motion to adjourn. Ms. Mathis, can you please call the roll for the motion?
Yes, sir. Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Council is too euphoric about this vote, but yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
An appropriately euphoric, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Um, thanks for a great evening and meeting as a giant. Everyone have a wonderful time.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.